Good evening. We've already started the meeting in open session before going into executive session. Now we're reconvening in open session again. We're live streaming and broadcasting on MCTV and a recording of the meeting will be available on MCTV and on the GM RSD website. Members of the public who wish to attend the meeting may join the meeting through the following links. The link may be found on the website under School Committee, Notices and Agendas for Upcoming Meetings. It's listed under tonight's School Committee Meeting. Per Governor Baker's orders suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the School Committee Meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via a Montague Community Television broadcast or as a Zoom audience member. The extension of the Emergency Open Meeting Law provisions were signed into law as Chapter 20, Section 20 of the Acts of 2021. The exact wording for anyone who'd like to see it may be found in our
We lost you, Jane.
Evening to everyone. We'd like to welcome our Zoom audience. Please remember if you are in the audience to keep your camera and your mic off. And we are, as we've said, we're live streaming and we are ready to go. This would be the time of the meeting where we have an opportunity for public participation, which is policy BEDH. And it has been reinstated to hold that participation remotely, but as of this evening, we do not have any community members that have requested to participate. Therefore, we'll continue with important events, and I think that will be Brian.
So just a small number of items. The Pandemic Response Advisory Committee will meet tomorrow instead of the following week. We had just met last Wednesday, but there are conflicts next week and discussions in that group are extremely valuable. So I didn't want to go three weeks without meetings. So we're going to have one tomorrow. The Sheffield Elementary Flu Vaccine Clinic is being held on Wednesday, October 6th, 3:30 to 5:00. Gill Elementary School Flu Vaccine Clinic on October 14th, 3:30 to 5:30. Hillcrest Elementary School Flu Vaccine Clinic on Friday, October 15th, from 3:30 to 5:00. And at the high school on Tuesday, October 19th, from 2:00 to 3:30 PM. And there is a Friends of Sheffield meeting scheduled for Wednesday, October 20th, from 4:00 to 4:45 PM.
Thank you. And I see we have one of our student representatives with us this evening. Hi, Sina.
Hi. All right. So basically, Student Council this week has just been discussing Booster Week, which would happen on October 18th to the 22nd. And then homecoming is still like in the works. We're not sure if it's going to be approved or not, but if it does get approved, it would probably be the 23rd of October. However, that would be the same day as the Pumpkin Fest or the Great Falls Festival. So that might be an issue. So we're not sure about that yet. Um, we were brainstorming Spirit Days for Booster Week. So far, we were thinking Mopey Monday, which would basically just be Pyjama Day, Neon versus Blackout Day, where we, you could either dress in like entirely neon bright colors or do entirely black. We could do Decades Day or Blast from the Past, because in the past, we've done Decades Day. But each grade would be assigned like a different decade to dress at, like in the theme of. But this year, we're thinking every student could just choose what like for whatever works for them. We were also going to do like a Preppy Day, and then Friday, we would do Class Color Day. I think the freshmen still need to choose their class color, and they also need a class advisor. So does all the 11th grade. On that Friday, we would also have the pep rally. We'd also do hallway wars, which is part of the reason why the ninth and 11th grade need advisors, so they can stay after school and work on that. Otherwise, that would be an issue. For fundraisers, there's a planned walkathon for the 10th grade, which I'm not sure has a set date, but I think it would either be on Tuesday, November 11th or November 5th. But we may have decided on one. I'm not completely sure. Yeah. And so that's what we've been discussing with Student Council this week.
Wow, thank you. You've all been busy. Great. Any questions for Sina at the moment? Great. We appreciate it. And also, if there are any fundraisers at different times at the classes or other groups they're holding within the school, we'd be more than happy to let people know. Cassie, do I see your hand up?
Yes, this is more of a question for Brian. I don't know if he knows the answer. So for class advisors, does it have to be a teacher or can it be a Unit C employee? Is there, I'm just, they're having trouble finding them.
Yeah, they're posted, they're posted internally first, and very often, people will go out. And, you know, sometimes a child in the class would reach out to a teacher if somebody hasn't come up that they've liked and asked them. So the ninth and 11th grade, they've been posted, and I think folks are just working their way around trying to recruit somebody from the staff. So, but no, it doesn't necessarily have to be a teacher. It could be somebody from, from Unit C.
Okay, thanks.
And I know sometimes in the past, two employees have decided to advise a class together. I think sometimes that, that works very well. Okay, thank you so much, Sina.
Thank you, Sina.
Okay, our next item then is Superintendent's Report, Brian.
I just set myself up to be muted. So case counts over the last 14 days have gone down in Montague by three as well as has our percent positivity. But in every other town in the area, with the exception of Warwick, cases have gone up, and in particular, Greenfield more than doubled over the course of the last 14 days, up to 58. Orange nearly doubled from the last 14 days with 46 cases. And Sunderland, which had previously had less than five since about May of last year, exploded with 22 positive cases in the last 14 days. So it's really clear that this, the presence of the virus in our area is, is, is significant. And, um, you know, percent positivity here too. There's, there is also a typo I did want to point out. In Orange, the percent positivity, I believe, is 5.11 rather than 3.50. So there's a really significant high rate of percent positivity in testing in that town. In the state, hopefully, we're leveling off. There are no changes to the vaccination rates in Franklin County as of September 20th. The CDC obviously still ranks Franklin County as being at high risk of transmission. You may have heard on the radio or on the television that yesterday Commissioner Jeff, Education Commissioner Jeff Riley announced the extension of the state mask mandate for all schools to at least November 1st. And the remainder, the information that's in here came from Steve Ellis, who sent out a communication that on recommendation of the Montague Board of Health, the Montague Select Board voted unanimously to re-implement the town's indoor mask mandate policy for town offices and vehicles. That order goes into effect today. Note that with regard to vehicles, two people may be in the same vehicle if masked, but for prolonged travel, the recommendation is separate vehicles. So that sort of impacts us if we have people from food service or custodial or even teachers riding around and will follow the transportation recommendation, open the windows in the vehicle if, if two people are in the car. The Select Board also voted to implement a townwide mask requirement for indoor spaces where public entry is allowed. So supermarkets, restaurants and shops, and this will be implemented starting on Monday, October 4th. As far as testing, where I brought concerns to the committee and that superintendents were chipping at the state to get their act together, we still have challenges with our, our pool testing program. So the test and stay program, which is done locally with the Binax rapid tests. Our nurses are doing a phenomenal job of keeping track of all of this information, getting information out and making adjustments. I had a meeting together with them last Wednesday. And one of the things that we had received yesterday, and pleasantly so, is that the six Western Mass State Senators have operated through the Collaborative for Educational Services to get high-ranking Department of Elementary and Secondary Educational, Education officials to meet with Western Mass superintendents tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. Melissa Bednarski will also attend for us to effectively ask them and provide some pressure and support. What's going on? Why can, why can the CIC not get this together? And so the legislature, our legislators are making an effort to get the Department of Education and their contractor to actually provide the support that schools need to have functional pool testing actually work in school districts. And that's, it's an important measure, and it's very frustrating for us to not have this up. So I'm very happy to hear that our senators have pulled this meeting together, and hopefully, it will result in making, in having some changes there.
Brian can finish. I'll ask after. That's fine.
Okay. As far as testing registrations, Gill has 111 out of 149 total individuals in the building are registered to participate in testing. And again, there's one consent. So if you register for testing, you're part, you're able, you're participating in both programs. At Hillcrest has the, the best numbers, 176 out of 186 individuals in the building are registered for testing. Sheffield has 160 out of 225. And at the high school, middle school, we're going to have to do some outreach because we only have 172 out of 472. So, you know, I know that some superintendents have been having principals and teachers and, and people on duties run out to cars with Chromebooks to have people sign up at the end of the day or a drop-off. And on a couple of different occasions, we have had families who have signed up for test and stay when a child has been identified as a close contact, because the child and the parent want the kid to be able to stay in school. So we have to push as many levers as we can to increase the number of individuals at the secondary level, including staff, to register for the testing protocols. And then for facilities, just wanted to make people aware that the lumber and necessary materials that had arrived at Sheffield Playground for the repairs of the playground, the facility staff have begun the repairs. But due to supply line issues, we only have about 70% of the bolts necessary to complete the project when they were working on it today. So they were going to, they went to the local hardware stores and to the local Home Depot. It was intended to the facility staff to go down to the Hadley Home Depot to see if they could find some of the same bolts, but I'll keep the committee posted when that playground is finished. Hopefully, you know, we're able to get the items that we need to actually wrap it up.
Okay, thanks. Cassie now.
And I just had a couple of questions about the testing, and maybe you've said this before and I should know it. So the rapid testing is only for students that are in close contact in the school that are asymptomatic. Correct? So, um.
A symptomatic student can be tested, but in order to be able to stay, they have to have a PCR test back it up. So a symptomatic student could, could get the rapid test, but then they have to get the other tests in order to return.
So, and I guess my question is, and this is something I meant to ask you earlier, but I'll ask you now. So what is the policy and do we have a policy? Because I, I don't even think we do on requiring tests for students to return to school after being sick. And the reason I ask is because my own son was out sick with a cold last week, and, and we kept him home and got him tested, not rapidly, but through GCC, and it was fine, and he came back. But I wasn't asked at his school to provide a test or anything. But I have friends at other schools whose children have been home with like stomach bugs and been told that they need a negative test to come back. So I'm just wondering if there's like a, like what the procedure is and if it's the same at all schools as I think.
Yeah, it should, it should be the same across the district. I apologize that I don't have them in front of me. In fact, that's one of the items that we talked about on Wednesday. But there should be really clear protocols, and we should be getting the same information. You know, obviously, the different students with different symptoms make slightly different information, but all of the protocols for return should be the same because they're all in writing. And so there's a particular period of quarantine and, and in some cases, require testing. In some cases, if a student hasn't got a test or isn't going to be able to provide a test because the family's not bringing them, that extends the period of quarantine.
Yeah, I think it might be helpful too, just as a suggestion. You know, depending on who you speak to when you call the school, so you know, a administrative assistant. I mean, they, they should be aware, and I'm sure that they do, and they do their best, but like, I guess if you're looking for medical advice, it should come from the nurse. You know what I'm saying? So, you know, if you call Ms. Smith at the front desk and say, my son has a cough, what should I do? You know, that's not who you should really be talking to. So I think sometimes parents also, you know, might not really consider the sort of chain of communication and who they should be, you know, asking those questions to. I don't know if that makes sense.
It does. Yep. And I sent out a communication to the whole staff indicating that only nurses can communicate information about COVID related issues. And none of us are authorized. I'm only authorized when I hear from the nurse what I can communicate to be able to send out to the community, and obviously, that's very limited. But we're also going to put together, from the P-RAC meeting last week, we're looking at putting together a little bit more of an accessible like FAQ that we can send out to families and have handy, the way the nurses have the protocols handy with them, and that might be helpful. But again, you know, I'd be reluctant to have an administrative assistant in a situation where they were reading off those protocols or making recommendations. I can tell you that they are very frequently informed about when a student can return to school. Because, you know, that takes the pressure off of the nurse if they're getting a phone call in that the nurse has authorized the administrative assistant to provide that information to the parent when they call, because they're going to need that information.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's tough because remote's not an option anymore, nor do I want it to be. But if a student is out and their COVID test is delayed for three days and they left with an earache and aren't being allowed back in school without a test, you know, I just don't want to run into those sticky situations. And I also don't want everyone inundating our wonderful nurses with phone calls every five minutes saying, you know, "Triage me." Um, so I don't know, just something to think about.
Yep. Okay. And I can bring that to the nurses, back to the nurses as well, because that has a lot to do with the volume of communication that they have, you know, significantly increased volume of communication that they've had to do over the past 18 months.
Thanks. Mike, did I see your hand as well?
Thanks. I just forwarded Brian the name of a fastener company in Greenfield that you could check for some bolts. No commercial for them necessarily, but.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Anyone else? Bill?
Does the district have any problem with the supply of rapid tests at this time?
No, that was the, the only frustrating part of that was finding out that we got our supplies before school started. And we, in Western Massachusetts, our school district and Frontier both started on the same day, and we were the earliest schools to start. And we got our testing supplies, I think, maybe a day or so before school started. Interestingly enough, we found out that when we went out to meet with the commissioner, that there were schools in the eastern part of the state who got their supplies a week to 10 days earlier than that. So, and I think I shared that at the previous meeting, but we did get them in, in time. And because the protocols were effectively the same, they were able to implement the test and stay stuff. Of course, that, by that, in the start of the school year, we didn't have very many people registered anyways, because many of the registrations were also going home by paper. And that was part of the, part of the problem was the state also didn't have the registration program set up for when we were starting school. So it was a couple of days into the school year before any of our families could register, which put us in a very difficult situation, because we wanted to implement testing. Say, we wanted to implement pool testing.
Anyone else? Before we go to the next item, I just need to reiterate what Brian said. Congratulations to Hillcrest. That's wonderful. Their rate of signing up is, is very, very impressive.
And they also have the, the largest number of teachers who are participating in the Pandemic Response Advisory Committee. And their presence on that committee is really probably more helpful than anything, because they're in such a unique circumstance, having the youngest children in the school district, and it really helps us to work together to see things that we might not otherwise see if we were just working as an administrative team on these problems.
For sure. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, Business and Operations Report. Is Joanne with us?
No, Joanne is not here this evening.
Okay. Actually, I can read her information if you'd like.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yes, I do. I know last time she mentioned that we needed to clear some of our equipment surplus. And I will read the list, and we will, we will vote that when we get to it on the business part of the meeting. But we'll give you the list now, and she's also included in our packet. There are pictures of those items, so that you can see what they look like. Attached, please find a list of equipment that we would like to declare and sell to the highest bidder, and we'll vote later. There's a 2003 John Deere tractor with a bucket, a sweeper attachment for the John Deere, a snow blower attachment for the John Deere as well. A 2004 F-350 dump truck, which is diesel. A 2002 Dodge Caravan passenger vehicle. A 2006 Chevrolet van, which is a cargo vehicle. A hydraulic steel sander and 11 computer tables. And later on, we'll take a vote. If we're willing to declare that all as surplus, then we can sell those items off. Any questions about that? Okay, thank you. The other item we'll get to again when we get a little further in the agenda is we just have one Accounts Payable warrant this week to be voted on. We'll do that later as well. Okay, thank you. In School Committee Reports, that is indeed the warrant subcommittee approval. We'll vote on it. The Accounts Payable warrant is number 3207 dated 9/24/21 in the amount of $178,187.46. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Oh, moved.
Cassie, Cassie, will you first?
Yes, and Mike second.
Okay, good. Cassie and Mike. And roll call for approval. Cassie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yep.
Mike?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Yes.
And myself. Yes. Thank you. Moving on to the business portion, the first item is a discussion and vote on graduation caps and gowns policy. Brian, would you like to give a little information on this?
Sure. So over the last couple of years, while students have been able to select between the two colors, I wanted to eliminate that option so that we're not in a situation ever again. Many schools had done this a few years ago. I know that at the previous school that I was at, we, we went to allowing the senior class to vote, and ever since the first vote was taken, the colors of the school are blue, white and gold. So they voted for these dark blue gowns that in gold trim installs, and it looks wonderful, and it helps unify the class in a single set of colors. So I was hoping that the school committee would vote to allow the senior class to choose the color with an S in parentheses from year to year. And I, I do know that Sandy Bailey will be sharing with this senior class research that she had done last year with the cap and gown company, where they had looked at really nice blue stole with white trim, blue, uh, blue caps and gowns with white trim that looked really elegant. And so cap and gown companies can do those in a couple of different ways, and the senior class, working through their officers from year to year, can take a look at those options and just provide them with the vote. And I gave Jane some language for the motion.
Yes, and then just a little more information if people didn't know the history. For many years back in the olden days, when I went to school here, girls wore white and the boys wore blue, and that was how it happened. More recently, it seemed important to let students choose, and students for the last few years could choose white or blue depending on their preference, which was just, at the time, we felt that was something to do until we had a decision in general. And so now what we're hoping for is if the committee is willing to vote as such, the motion would read, "Move that each year the senior class shall vote to decide on unified color or colors for graduation caps and gowns."
Oh, moved.
Okay, Mike has moved it.
Heather seconded.
And Heather seconded it. Any questions or discussions about that? Cassie?
So they would be changing every year? Essentially?
They could. The key point of it is, I think what's very likely to happen is that the, they'll find a combination of blue and white at the school colors that they'll live with. But the most important thing in adopting this policy is giving, giving the selection to the students and making sure that it's unified.
And I completely support that. I think I was just thinking, if we rented them, would we be, just be renting different colors every year? And I guess I answered my own question. Never mind.
Okay.
Good. Asked and answered. That's always easy. Any other questions or comments on that before we vote?
Yeah, I think the, the original movement was to take gender out of the color rather than to make a statement about preferential gender. And I think combining the colors is a great way to take gender out of the colors and still represent whatever they represent for the school district.
Anything else? Okay, roll call vote to approve or not. Cassie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Bill?
Yep.
Nick?
Yes.
And myself. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that can be communicated to the senior class and at any point that they, thank you, Heather, would like to do that. That's great. Next item under business is discussion of remote in-person school committee meetings. Anyone have any new or varying thoughts? I think last time, it just occurred to me with the mask mandate as it exists and the microphones, as we've always, always struggled for people to hear us clearly when we were broadcasting. I had this vision of all of us talking with a mask and a microphone and nobody knowing anything we said, which just made me kind of chuckle briefly.
Let's go back in person tomorrow.
And then they could just wonder what we said. It would be, yeah, we would, couldn't even understand each other probably in the room. But I think we'll keep an eye on things unless anybody has any other information. I know Tina's worked really hard to figure out how to set the room up when we can go back, so that we're allowing for distancing and all those kinds of things that are important. But I think especially with the mask mandates back on. Again, I think that to me also reminds me that if it's not necessary for other people to be in the school building, it's probably just as well that they're not, and we're not exactly essential when it comes to the day-to-day educating of the children. Our role is different, and that role we're able to complete virtually. Okay, but we will keep thinking of it. Now we need to may have that vote to declare the equipment as surplus. I will entertain a motion to declare the list as red as surplus equipment that can be sold to the highest bidder.
So moved.
Okay, Mike moved it.
Cassie seconds.
Cassie seconded it. Cassie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Bill?
Yep.
Nick?
Yes.
And myself. Yes. Thank you. Next item is Next item is there's a discussion about addressing pandemic learning loss. And Brian has included a large document about MCAS scores.
So we had received the district's MCAS scores and I'm joined tonight by Jean Powers, who did a great deal of work in pulling the slideshow together. And I'm going to share the screen. So Jean, you just have to watch whether or not you're muted as we go through. But Jean, if I could ask you to work through the first couple of slides, do you have the slideshow close by? That you can see it? Or you're okay with just the screen share?
Screen share is fine.
Okay, so I'm going to put, put it up on my screen. And we want to move through this as quickly as possible, you know, for the purpose of efficiency, but also provide the opportunity to ask any questions that you might have. Obviously, last year's MCAS, you know, was very difficult because of the circumstances that preceded the previous year. And in during the course of the school year last year, there were only a handful of students, or there were a handful of students who chose not to participate. Because in particular, at the 10th grade level, they needed to do so in person. Okay, Jean, do you want to give a little bit of an overview here in these first couple of slides?
Definitely. So the next couple of slides are directly from the Department of Education's messaging to districts about things that have have come up, things that were new for last year. So this slide just over is an overview of the things that were different to last year's assessment. So the first is that there was an extended administration timeline. They extended it very far out for allowing for more chances for students to take the test. And in grades three to eight, they were randomly assigned one session. So typically there were two sessions. So they even shortened the amount of time and the amount of questions that were tested on students. And they were randomly selected to take one of the two sessions. So students in one class might have taken one session versus another, both are all in ELA math and the science for grades five and eight. If they were remote, students were fully remote, they could take the assessment at home. We were one of six states to be able to do that statewide, approximately 20% of students took the assessment at home. And that was required that the test administrators would monitor via Zoom or Google meets or some other way to, you know, make sure, one, the workspace was clear and that students were zooming at the same time of taking the assessment. Grade 10 was remained in two sessions and it was an in-school test. Grade 10 was not eligible to be able to take it remotely, which you may see there's some participation rate that in is kind of in correlation with that for our district. The SGP, which is the student growth percentile, is measured based off of two to three years of prior baseline data. So typically they go year to year, but in since in 2020, there was no assessment. They had to go back two to three years to get some growth percentiles for students. Students in grade 11 also had the opportunity to take the test because they would have missed it in their 10th grade year. And again, that would be the legacy test and the idea of 11th graders choosing to take it would be if they wanted to try to earn the scholarships that come with MCAS testing. So you can go to the next slide. So here's some, just some of the kind of common FAQs. There is a whole FAQ document. I'm happy to share the link later with the school committee if you would like. But the idea of what this question is, can the 2021 MCAS results be compared to previous year MCAS results at the state district, school and student group levels? And they say, yes, you know, there are some different components, but they still want us to be able to compare, compare results across the state, across the district, school. We, what you'll see in here is we're show, we'll show you the grade level in comparison to the state. And, you know, participation rate again varied across the district, depend, the district and the state, depending on students taking it remotely or being able to come in for the 10th grade test. So the next slide has another kind of FAQ. Can it be compared to previous MCAS results for the individual student? So students in grades three through eight were given one session instead of two. So their, their performance may vary. And so this is important, I think, for parents and guardians to know when we do send home the information about MCAS scores is that the test that they took the pre, you know, in 2021 is not necessarily the same length that they may have taken in 2019. So we still can compare and still take a look at it. I think the biggest thing to look at is how students do on individual standards that are being assessed versus necessarily the, the, you know, meeting or exceeding expectation level. I think looking at how they're doing in the standards within math, science and ELA is kind of the better place to look in comparison. And then the last FAQ really is about comparing within and across districts. So they really want us to focus on using results as diagnostics and improvements at the local level. A lot of different circumstances within the pandemic and Desi's not going to be releasing a district comparison tool as it has in previous years. So they just kind of caution us when we look at comparisons across the district or across schools within the same district, pay attention to participation rates of individual schools and districts. So, you know, if we're seeing scores that look very different across the grade levels, we might want to look at participation rate first versus one school versus another in grades three through, three through six. So that's, those are the comments, some of the FAQs that I thought really stood out that would be important for the school committee to know. And again, there, there's a whole FAQ document that we can share with you as well.
And then here is a comparison of our district's participation rates with green being an area where we exceeded the participation rates or matched the participation rates in content areas across the state. White effectively being matched or right around, yellow being a little below and red being substantially below. So for example, seventh grade math, only 55% of students participated in the seventh grade math MCAS as opposed to 94% of students from across the state. Third grade comparisons across the state. This is for ELA. And again, I will go through each of the slides, but I'm going to move fairly quickly. So this is a third, third grade English language arts because the slides are in, are included in the packet. Fourth grade compared to the state average. So we had a few more students who exceeded expectations, but a larger percentage of students who were only partially meeting and a larger percentage of students not meeting. Fifth grade ELA. You can see that in, in each of these areas, we're below the state average. And again, you know, not really a, a fair comparison because we're obviously taking into account schools like Wellesley, Newton and other schools, which have far greater resources than we do. Even during the pandemic. And ELA in the sixth grade. ELA in grade seven. We approach closer to the state averages in meeting expectations here, but obviously have significant concerns about the percentage of students who are not meeting expectations. And ELA in the eighth grade. And 10th grade ELA. And then math achievement as measured by the MCAS test, the third grade as compared to the state. Last year was the first year with the Bridges math curriculum. Fourth grade. Fifth grade. Sixth grade. Seventh grade in mathematics. And eighth grade in mathematics. And then our 10th grade numbers, where we were at the state average in terms of meeting expectations. Again, we had fairly low participation rates as compared to the state in the 10th grade because students who were in remote and we had a significant number of students, probably about 30% of the high school and middle school students who chose to remain remote for the remainder of last school year. Those who were in the 10th grade were not able to take this test because you had to be in school to take it. And then science, technology, engineering, the grade five tests. And science, technology, engineering, eighth grade test comparison. And there was no science, technology and engineering test administered last year. The class of 2023 is not required to take that test by the Board of Education, given the nature or given the impact of the pandemic. And then Jean, if you could add a little bit of information here and as you had referred to student growth percentiles earlier in the presentation?
Yeah. So student growth percentiles again, measure the students year to year. So on, let's say you, you know, in 2019, a student, you know, scored a specific score in fifth grade. It would be, they would then follow that student with students that are like that student across the state. And then the next time they took the test, so in this case, it was in 2021, that group of students, they would compare the growth for that individual student compared to his or her kind of cohort that they've been assigned based on how they did. So we don't have any student growth percentiles for third grade ever because they don't have any score to refer to. And we don't have it for fourth grade this year because there was no test in 2020 when they were in third grade. So we can only look at percentile growth for fifth through 10th. And the, the idea is that if a student scores between 40 and 60, like it shows on the bottom left of the slide, that's considered a year's worth of growth according to the state. So I've highlighted in green, the ones that fall right into that 40 to 60 percentile. So you can see in seventh grade math, as a whole, students made a year's worth of growth in eighth grade math as well. And then in 10th grade, ELA made us, made a year's worth of growth and even a little bit more than a year's worth of growth compared to the math. So you can see if some of the numbers in, you know, fifth grader are a little bit low, sixth grade in ELA. And then in math in 10th grade, it looks like I missed one right there. ELA in 10th grade also should be highlighted. But you can see that this is growth percentile. So it would be compared. So now the students in this, in where they've scored in 2021, they'll be put in a cohort compared to students like them across the state and then we'll be able to compare again. And so they, they, the state did say these are, even though this, this test were a little bit different for our third through eighth grade students, that they were able to use multiple year data to provide an SGP. So instead of just having a one-year data, so from year to year, they use 2017, 2018, 2019 data to then create an SGP. So again, the goal is between 40 and 60 that that shows that a group has made a year's growth in their academic learning in that area.
Thank you very much, Jean. So you can see that as a baseline, you know, similar to the, what we had presented last year when we, we selected some areas of data reporting mid-year, looked at failure rates, looked at other considerations and concerns that we can see that we have, we have a low baseline that we need to climb off of. And so I wanted to paint that as a picture of the challenge that we have ahead of us as a school district and, or just one of the challenges. And we obviously want to see a change in those scores as the tests come back online this year. And looking for that type of improvement.
Does anyone have any questions for Brian or Jean? Cassie?
Like I'm so chatty tonight. I'm sorry. It's more just kind of, I, I think I shared this with somebody earlier, but you know, to put it into perspective, the students that took the MCAS last year, whether they were in person or took it at home in the middle of a pandemic, the last time that they were in school, like the last time they had a full year of school in a normal setting was three grades prior to where they are now. So I think in perspective, like it almost seems like just impossible expectations that we would be looking at their scores now compared to where they were pre-pandemic and expecting it to be where they're expecting it to be. So, you know, I know everyone's working hard and it's doesn't feel good to not be hitting the marks that you want to hit, but I think we have to give ourselves some grace because we're all just doing the best we can. And, you know, we're collecting that data. So that's all I got.
I do want to add something. Oh, sorry, Mike.
Go ahead. I can wait.
I was just going to add something in, in opening up this school year that I have been unbelievably impressed with the way that our staff is working to support students. You know, perhaps even more so than working remotely during the pandemic, which was in and of itself exhausting. That I know that our, our teachers are paraprofessionals, custodial cafeteria, they're all sticking together. But they're tired and they're working hard. And as things settle, you know, we're hopeful that things will settle in, but I just want to give them a ton of credit. I know that there have been a lot of compliments that have been issued by, from one colleague to another, from one unit to another in showing appreciation. And I'm deeply appreciative to be in a school district where the educators support and care about one another as much as they care about the children. And I'm very appreciative of those, of the folks with whom I get to work every day.
Mike?
Thank you. I'm not sure. This is just FYI for Jean and Brian, the new kids. We haven't had valid MCAS results for maybe 10 years. The park experiments, park one, park two, park out back. So, I mean, on the one hand, it lowers our starting point. So make it easier for us to show improvement. Of course, that whole show improvement thing, because at some point you can only improve so much. And from there on, you're going to fail. So the higher you get, the more likely you are fail. But that's, that's not a concern we have right this moment. But I, I mean, it is important for people who are trying to make sense in the audience and what all that means, no idea. Even before the pandemic, we were, we had experimental tests coming through. We haven't had valid test scores in, I mean, really, probably 10 years. And that's, that's no reflection on anyone or any of the activities we're talking about. But it's just, it's really hard to look back and take anything from those pictures. I mean, there's room for improvement, obviously, but most of the, a lot of that room for improvement is at the state level. I'll just leave it at that.
Thanks, Mike. Jean?
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to add and kind of, you know, agree Cassie with you about, you know, I see MCAS as a, a single data point. And especially last year, it being a very unique and unstable data point. And so some of the other things we're doing in the district, we've been doing for many years, doing math assessments through our, now with our Bridges curriculum at the elementary level, reading assessments and multiple different components of reading assessments. And this year we've been added, or we've added iReady to the middle and high school for assessment. So we're now assessing students K to 12 in math and reading. And we're really starting to dig into that data a little bit. We're just starting the testing at the middle and high school level. But, you know, along with the MCAS data again, which is a single point in a single time, we're looking at using some more consistent data throughout the year so that we really can target and address the learning loss that, you know, compounded based on last year. So I think, you know, we'll start being able to report out on some of that data as well as we move forward and gather it and kind of see how students are making progress to kind of address that learning loss. But I, I couldn't agree with you more that it was an interesting year for MCAS for sure, and that we do kind of take a look at it and know, you know, this is a snapshot. And what are the other snapshots we have to put this picture, you know, this collage together? You know, this is a snapshot and what are the other snapshots we have to put this picture, you know, this collage together.
And thank you, Jean, for reminding people about that. I think as a former teacher. The kinds of tests that you're speaking of that are done on a regular basis in classrooms by the teachers. To help identify particular areas that students. Might need more work to understand a concept. Those kinds of things are so usable. At the moment. And I think we've always done a variety of those. And I think that's a good reminder.
Thank you very much, Jean, by the way, for your assistance, not just tonight, but in helping to get the presentation together and for looking through. You know, the, the data as it was presented, it will be easier. To help principals break this down in a meaningful way. Once everything's finished loading into Edwin and we can share as an admin team. So thank you very much for your hard work on that.
Yes, our thanks too, to Eugene and Brian for putting all this information together in a cohesive, large document.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item under business is a discussion of the school committee goals. And I think I see it more as just a reminder, we've scheduled a particular one item meeting. Next Tuesday to work on our school committee goals. In order to do that as effectively as we can, we're going to try to use a Google, Google Docs format. That should work since we can't be in person. We've decided that Cassie and I chatted and then we talked with Tina, our tech expert, and. That should make it workable. We'll do our best to do as much as we can that one evening. We'll probably want to. Continue to look at parts of it or bring it back from time to time until it meets. Our goal for the document itself. In order to prep for that, we will send out to everyone on the committee. Policy BA, which is an overriding policy for school committee goals in general. And we will also send to people the specific goals that the school committee developed. Covering 2018 to 2021. So those two documents should be available to you before we get together Tuesday. They'll be sent an email. Any questions or comments about that?
So in the past, in the working meetings in person, haven't been televised nor. Does the public show up? I don't remember if we invited them or not.
We haven't, we haven't televised them. Good point, Cassie, but we have posted them as an open meeting. So if.
Not that, yeah, not that anyone would want to watch that, but.
Right. It's not really, not that interesting.
Not the most entertaining thing in the world, but just let people know.
Right. Because of the Zoom audience, I guess if someone was interested in being. In the audience to watch our, you know, thought process as much as you can see it. They would be welcome, but we're not going to have any of the usual. Broadcasting of it because it definitely is, you know, not very scintillating at all. And it's a special meeting. It's not a regular meeting. A good point. Thank you. And that meeting will start at six o'clock rather than 6:30. We agreed. Try to get started a little earlier. We usually try to keep it to no more than a couple of hours max, probably less. Okay. Thank you. The other item on business is discussion and potential vote on priority indicators for the superintendent's evaluation. Brian?
So Jane and I attended and Jane will provide a little bit more information to the committee. Jane and I attended. A webinar put on by MAS, the Superintendent's Association and MASC in conjunction. On the evaluation process and rather than having the committee. In a situation where they're trying to evaluate a superintendent on all 30 plus indicators across the four standards. That it's strongly recommended and I've had conversations with other superintendents who have done this to, for the committee to vote on focus indicators. Typically six to eight indicators that should be across all four standards. So Jean again assisted me along with Diane Ellis to take a look at just making some suggestions. However, tonight, given the fact that. There's a, just a quorum of school committee members. I'm asking the committee to table the discussion until more members can be present because they should weigh in on this. It doesn't have any kind of a negative impact on the development of my goals. In the meantime, but I, I will put the same agenda item on the next meeting for the 13th. And all I've done. In providing the document. That's in front of the. Superintendent's evaluation process document. Is to identify some, some suggestions for priority indicators. That are aligned with our district goals as well as aligned with the focus indicators of the teachers. So Jean in particular. Identified. And they're in bold in the left-hand column. Meeting diverse needs, adjustments to practice and family engagement are the three focus indicators for teachers. So to me. It makes sense for the superintendent and building administrators to be aligned with those three goals as well, so that. All of us for educators are trying to focus our direction. Together and have it all be aligned rather than trying to move in 12,000 different directions with our goals across every indicator. And one of the things that I would like to do at some point in the very near future, probably into November and December. Is bring back some tools that the committee could review. So that we're not using that cumbersome electronic tool. We should probably narrow it down. And that I can get together with. Some people who have some technological capabilities to make something more user friendly for the school committee than the tool that we have currently.
Yes, I think that the webinar was very helpful. I think for. As many years as we've had the tool as it exists from the state, it hasn't been user friendly in any sense. I think it's been really. Cumber some and there's in my mind, at least there's a lack of parallel. Information in it. What you rank on one page does not necessarily relate to. How they phrase things and what they're looking for on another page. It's, it's extremely complicated and has been. A bit frustrating, I think, for members. And last year, having been the pandemic as well. I think it was kind of as the most frustrating I've ever felt people felt. It was quite difficult to feel successful filling it out. I think the webinar has helped us. Think about streamlining it, looking more at focus indicators, looking more at making it. Better for the superintendent to be able to. As he's reporting on different things that happened during the year to even reference those. Indicators and things that will help all of us to have a little better. Understanding of how to work on it when we need to in the spring. So I think if that's acceptable, we will table that larger discussion. Until our next regular meeting, which won't be next Tuesday, but the following regular meeting, which will be the 12th.
It's the 13th, I believe. Yep. And Jane, if I could just add one point, Nicholas. I just wanted to make sure that you, you got the full packet before the meeting because that information will be the, is the last stuff that's in the packet and it's a, it's a fairly lengthy document because it's the entire. Superintendent's evaluation process from the state. But all of the descriptors and each of the indicators are in there. So this also gives you as a new member, a little bit more time to take a look through. You know, the suggestions that Jean and I have made in conjunction with, you know, getting a look at the other indicators across the four standards that you might think. Might fit better.
Yeah, I did get the whole, the whole thing in my packet.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
Good. Thanks. Any other questions or comments? Maybe just kind of a general consensus thumbs up or down to table the larger discussion until our next regular meeting. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. We do not have any minutes to approve in our packet this evening. Any agenda requests are always welcome. You're welcome to. Give them to Cassie, Brian or myself at any point. We generally do our agenda planning. The Tuesday before our next meeting, but. I don't know when we'll do it next week because we're having another meeting on the previous Tuesday. So we'll.
Can I give you one now?
Sure.
I'd like to have the. Six town regionalization study board. Updates if there are any. Be a regular thing. During the fall. It's important to start. Getting more information out to the public and to the committee. And I know Brian and Joanne can do it as well. Cause Joanne is quite involved in. A lot of the work supporting. This effort, but in any event, it needs to be discussed more in a broader. To a broader audience than it is, than it has been over the last year. We've actually, we're two years into this thing now. And many people have a lot of questions. The first one being, what the hell is it? So I think that if it's on our agenda, that would be a great help. And. If it comes to pass that nothing comes of it, then we can drop it. Isn't that fair?
I appreciate this suggestion, Bill. I think that's a great suggestion. I've been looking forward to being able to add that to the agenda. Because any information that comes forward is helpful. And I know you and Cassie are, are town reps on that group. So definitely.
Well, I'll tell you more than. One person seemed quite excited that Cassie's name came up. So somewhere Cassie, you've got a reputation.
I'm kind of a big deal. Bill, are you thinking that you and I provide the update or I'm just confused? We're on different subcommittees for that. I'm not sure which subcommittee you're on. I'm just thinking. Or just a general discussion. Okay.
No, it's going to be more general. What is happening now, for example, is we're looking for. Once we get grants, which we think we're getting or have gotten. Then we're looking for, the grants are for facilitator, for example. And the facilitator will be an outreach person, an organizer, and then a director of. Of whatever meetings we have. So no, I don't. I don't know that there's going to be that much information immediately or even every meeting. But having it on the agenda at least gives the opportunity. To again, say what it, what it is.
I know. I agree completely. Just keeping the dialogue open.
Yep.
Thank you. I think that's a great suggestion. Appreciate it. Yes. Anything else at the moment? We'll add it. Otherwise, please feel free to get in touch with us. Okay. Our next special meeting will be October 5th. It'll be a working meeting on our school committee goals. It will begin at six o'clock. After that, the next two regular meetings are October 12th and October 26th. They will be virtual and the open meeting will begin at 6:30 each time. If there's an executive session, we'll post it. And that is usually prior to the regular meeting. Anything else at the moment? I guess we are done.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Mike?
I'll second that.
Cassie? All right. Thank you. And let's go through the list. Cassie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And myself. I think that will do it. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thanks, everyone.